Mr. Did you get the roll call? Carl Ashley.
Present.
Georgia Holmes.
Present.
Andrea Kramer.
Present.
Caroline Swartzenbach.
Present.
Kara Hagan.
Present.
Tim Tesher.
Present.
Kristis Blain.
Present.
Members are present. Thank you. A couple of changes to the agenda. We are going to remove new business I O C from this meeting and probably move it out to the next. I also want to inform the media that we will go into executive session again after this meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda as. Redowner correct.
Second. Cindy, were you adding the set of public hearing for the temporary liquor license?
Well, Nolan told me we're doing that on a fourth.
Okay, all right.
I trust. Okay, so.
Motion in the second.
All in favor of the amended agenda?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, thank you for adopting the agenda.
May I ask you a question? You're gonna take I O C off, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, the Hill material.
Do you have here?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We'll give you a call tomorrow. Can you hear me now? Yeah. Can you hear me?
Nope. See, it's on, it speaks right to us.
Mine usually, you have mine. Good one. The good ones, huh?
Can you hear me now?
There you go. Okay, it's me. Minutes from March 7.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Bills in between.
Motion to approve.
Second. Hundred eighty thousand thirty-two and twenty-eight cents. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Current claims, a hundred.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
On page nine. Boden Fur and Firearms. I am assuming that these are budgeted items.
No, you guys approved to supplement his budget for the purchase of these ARs.
Okay, so it has been, we have made that supplement?
No, they have budget authority right now because it's beginning of the year, but you will have to pass the supplemental budget appropriation ordinance.
But we haven't done that as yet.
No, it takes two readings and publication, so we're gonna do it mid-year and closer to the end of the year to include all of the items.
All right. Thank you.
I have one question. I don't know if my mic's on. On page five, the metal detector for seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, what is that for?
It was purchased by the water department. They got three bids. I talked to Tracy Bastian about it, and they use metal detectors an awful lot for what they do, and it was a replacement for a bad one.
So this is for the water department?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I have one request for communications from the public from Christie Wagner. Is she here? Back or on the dock? Could you please come to the microphone? Front row in the light.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. It is my pleasure to be a part of your community as your community coach through a contract with the Shed Co., which is the Southern Hills Development Corporation. I've had a very wonderful experience being in your community the last seven months. We've met with over thirty-eight different organizations. We've had several public meetings. And we're currently involved in five different initiative teams, which we have about anywhere from fifteen to twenty people involved in each of those initiative teams. So the purpose of engaging the community and asking for public input has been very inspiring to a number of your community members, and many of them are sitting here tonight. And so I would welcome any conversation that you would like to have. I know a number of you have been involved and been a part of our process, and I would welcome any opportunity. At any time, if you would ever want to have a formal presentation made to keep you abreast of what was going on. In each of these, I know that there's a lot of communication, and this is an inclusive process. It's not an exclusive process. We always invite more people to be a part of it. It was kind of interesting, as we went around and talked to almost four hundred people prior to our community gathering, people said, "Thank you. Thank you for listening to what I think is important to the greater Hot Springs." And that was so wonderful. And even, we went to the high school and visited with the youth, and they are our future generation. And that's what's so inspiring, to see how excited they are about having community gathering spaces and places for them to go and participate with the young and the old and learn from each other. And it's just a really neat experience. I would entertain any questions that you might have or comments from any of you who have participated.
Oh, it was a good learning experience. I enjoyed it, yes. We had a lot of people that enjoyed it.
And we're still going strong, aren't we, Georgia?
Yeah.
We just, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would appreciate it if you would come occasionally and update us on what people want.
Sure.
What you're learning from the community.
Absolutely. We currently are involved, I'm gonna ask Andrea to help me out if I, or some of you up here. We have a tourism initiative team. We have an economic development industrial initiative team. We have a health and wellness team. We have a recreation team that also includes, under recreation is also the parks. And I was really impressed with the park plan that you all initiated. Congratulations, because a lot of communities don't have that, and that's a wonderful tool for quality of life in our communities. Which one am I missing?
Housing.
Housing, thank you. We have a housing initiative team as well. And a matter of fact, we're in the process of each, the purpose of the community engagement process is to unify Hot Springs for a sustainable future. To unify Hot Springs for a sustainable future. That is the overarching purpose of our community engagement process. Now, each of those five initiative teams.
Can we turn that mic down?
Last time we had this issue back up here.
Oh, is it because it's too close?
Yes, it's similar to the, we can't get you on camera, but we can at least get you so you can be on.
Yeah, that's fine. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Nolan. Y'all need to know the story here, because when I first came to your community, I gave Nolan several names. Nice names, all nice names, but like Nathan and, you know, anyway, it's kind of an inside joke. So, but each one of the initiative teams is developing their own purpose statement, and we went, we got to step one today with housing and tourism. Next week, Monday night, we'll be meeting at six-thirty at Pine Hills with the recreation group. Tuesday night, we'll be meeting with health and wellness, and I can't recall where that's going to be. Kara, do you know?
Here.
Oh, right here at the Mueller Center, thank you. And then on Wednesday night, we'll be meeting with the economic development and industrial development group at seven o'clock. And that would be where, Andrea? Mueller Center? Don't know yet? Yeah, Mueller Center probably. We're trying to have as much here as possible. You have a beautiful facility here, and it really gets used a lot, so. Any other questions? And thank you for the invitation, I appreciate that, Madam Councilwoman.
Yeah, thank you. We're glad you're here, and we're glad you're helping support the future of the community.
Awesome, thank you so much. Andrea has my contact information if any of you ever want to get ahold of me. She's got it.
Okay, great.
There's one thing I do want to add, is I've been involved in a lot of these groups, and I like how Christie is working so much with not only the people in the community, but also the Black Hills State University study. She was present in both of those up in Spearfish. And also works with Kim Barbieri in the city.
Oh, yes.
So it's like, she's already working on the unifying part, and.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Kara, so exactly right. I have actually been involved in a couple of different studies that Black Hills State University did, and I, with other communities in the Black Hills, and I have to say, your study is remarkable. It is awesome, in that they came into your community, they were in your community, they interviewed people who live in your community, they also interviewed people who visited your community. So they really got a broad perspective of what, of your community in that tourism study. And then, right away from the beginning, Kim Barbieri was, and you, the city council, were looking to update your comprehensive plan, and we've been engaged in that too, because we don't want to reinvent the wheel. Let's just, let's maximize our community input to its utmost, so thank you very much.
I'm glad we have a progressive moving forward activity going on.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Yeah, and if you or Andrea could, as Caroline suggested, just plan maybe quarterly, quarterly or however you think's, you know, reasonable updates, we'd definitely welcome that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. I, it's seven-twenty, and we have the bid opening for Haying at our airport, so I'm gonna skip to that right now. My favorite thing to do is try to open these. In public. So we only have one bid, correct?
For Haying.
For Haying. And... It is from Mr. Tim Lamont. "I'm making an offer for seventy percent for myself and thirty percent for the city. The reason for the offer is because of the large amount of cheap grass and weeds. If the good grass was around eighty-five percent, I would do sixty-fourty, until then it will be seventy-thirty. I will be willing to buy your share at sixty dollars a ton." Thank you, Tim Lamont. Okay.
Do we, do we accept or reject at this point of the evening, or?
You have the option to. Do you have any language you included? I recommend it be tabled for the next meeting, be accepted or rejected.
I agree with that.
To allow us time to do our diligence.
Okay, so we'll have Nolan put this on the.
He needs a motion to second.
Motion to put it on the next agenda.
Sounds like that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We will, motion carried it and include it on the four-four agenda. Okay. We have three minutes until the bid opening for the golf course pile of logs, so I'm gonna go back up to personnel. I have no problem lumping them all together, does anybody?
I just have a question on G and H.
Okay, so let's do A through F.
Motion to approve.
Second up.
Discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. A through F, motion carried. Item G and H.
G and H. Ellen Hefner and Danny Reiser as clubhouse attendants. I thought we only had one clubhouse attendant working with our clubhouse manager.
No, there are several.
Probably more like six.
We're open more than twelve hours a day, roughly twelve hours a day, seven days a week, the summer months, so to have only two people doing that, we'd have a lot of overtime. So she schedules different people for shorter shifts as a temporary summer seasonal position.
That was my question, is it? Do we have more than, more than one? Okay, no other question?
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Session theme, and that was just for G and H?
G and H.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I through L.
Motion to approve.
Who said that segment?
Andrea. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. We have completed personnel. I am going to talk very slowly for about thirty seconds and do the bid opening for the log pile at the Southern Hills Golf Course. Tim's saying I'm a slow envelope opener. We have four of them. We are doing this for the second time, because we received bids in different forms, and the pile was configured. So I am now going to open them at seven-twenty-five. First one. Terry Bloom has bid two hundred dollars, two-hundred-and-one dollars. He's willing to take all of the file. Sorry. Marv Stevens, two hundred dollars and fifty-one cents.
Two-hundred-and-one?
Two hundred dollars and fifty-one cents. We have a bid of a hundred dollars and thirty, a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents from Gene Plant. Get that, a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. You guys are creative. Never has a log pile been so much fun.
The code is.
I know. Charlie and Brenda Mauer, a hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-six cents.
A hundred and seventy-six and seventy-six?
A hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-six cents. So I believe the highest bid was the.
Terry Bloom.
Mr. Lamont.
No.
Wrong pile.
Terry Bloom.
Terry Bloom.
Yeah, this one.
Motion to approve the sale to Terry Bloom at two-hundred-and-one dollars.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Is there a timeline on how long he's got to get that out of there?
End of the month.
End of the month? Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. All right, page two. First reading of ordinance number eleven-sixty-four, chapter fourteen A, Tree, City Trees and Forests.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Is this a new ordinance?
Yes, it is.
So who is doing, who or what ordinance were we following before with the trees and around town?
This is for our Tree City USA to be designated.
Oh, this is, oh, it doesn't state that in there though, does it?
It was helped or scalped before.
No, the ordinance doesn't specifically state that, but this has been in discussion now for a while. Part of being a Tree City USA is having an ordinance for trees and tree care in place. So this helps us check off one of the four boxes, become a Tree City USA while establishing a less helter-skelter approach.
And who is our parks person right now?
Our parks foreman, our maintenance foreman, Billy Morrow oversees the parks.
So wouldn't it be who goes to have them be the city tree manager? The people who actually work outside with it, with the trees?
Right now, we don't have any certified arborists on staff, and a lot of the tree conversation, tree discussion, we run through committee, and given Billy's time constraints, he's not able to attend all of our community meetings, but usually the city administrator position is able to, and so any actual arborist question that would refer to an expert would be definitely made to the USDA or our local arbor experts.
We do have an arbor expert that came into one of the meetings, and he is willing to help the city with it.
Insult.
It'd be a consultation process. At no expense.
Part of the thing that you get by being a Tree City USA is you get help with a lot of the care of the trees, and I believe that's.
Kristin, I'm gonna ask you to speak into a microphone.
I just said that being designated as a Tree City USA also includes a lot of those things that would be covered. While I'm still not speaking in to talk.
I tried.
Yes.
I had a question, Nolan. On, I don't know what page this is, maybe it's four? Yeah, it's page four. Declared to contain any pest infestation. Who would declare that?
We'd actually go through the county for that, Fall River Weed and Pest Control, to help us make that identification.
So someone would see a tree, and then you'd go to the county?
Yeah, we'd have the inspections, deem if there was a pest that was affecting it.
All right, and on five, B at the top, property owners should thin trees and do other treatments based on firewise recommendations. So I mean, you have to, or are you saying, someone can come in and say that tree's too close to your house, cut it down?
We're advising all tree care to be along firewise recommendations. Enforcement, unlike all tree and maintenance ordinance, is enforcement's always a challenge, because there's so much that we have to redo. And so when we are making modifications or recommending modifications, they would follow firewise guidelines.
But what if someone doesn't want to cut down the trees close to their house? Are you gonna come in and make them?
No. We will go through the process outlining the ordinance when it comes to tree boards.
It doesn't say that you won't make them.
I believe it says it goes to the tree board or something.
I don't like it going to the tree board.
Do you have recommendations for modification? That's the purpose of a first reading.
Well, here, it says they should thin their trees. It doesn't say they have to, they should.
We just ask for essentially good common sense when it comes to caring for your own property.
And this is just.
Make good missions.
If you have, if you have any questions or like any modification, this is, you know, what this first reading is about.
Our goal is to have this in place by Arbor Day, so we can be common, Tree City certified by that unique date, but if we need more readings, we're by all means entitled to them.
Instead of recreating the wheel, did we pull this from somebody else?
We did, we used about six different ones with the Arbor Day Foundation as well to help guide us to the template.
Nolan, I was gonna comment too, we have extreme fire danger right now.
Can't hear you, Georgia.
We have extreme fire danger right now in Southern Hills.
Aye.
And we do have a lot of trees that are in danger of, if the fire that we had up by the state home was really serious, it could have gone the other way. So I don't know, this is something that's really important. We need to look at this and evaluate it very carefully, but I feel like it's something we need.
And could you clarify the difference between a street tree and, over here it talks about, because it says, "No street tree will be planted unless approved by," basically the city administrator.
The city administrator or the tree board?
Well, it says city tree manager, that would be you.
Which would have to be deferred to the tree board.
It doesn't say that though.
There should be definitions at the beginning of the ordinance?
Yep, I'm reading it right here. It says the Hot Springs, this person shall be the city administrator.
The street tree, the street tree defining what?
Street tree should probably be something that put in the, just between the sidewalk and the street.
In the, what the city.
It does state that.
Should either definition at the beginning of the ordinance of a street tree, just constitute? Basically, it's a boulevard tree, it's in the city right of way.
And if you don't have a boulevard, then how do you determine how, where the boulevard starts and ends?
Because you have to plant it in the street.
You don't have a boulevard, you'd be in the hay.
But my house doesn't have a boulevard, I just have right to the street.
Then you can't be able to turn it.
Well, I'm two there, what am I gonna do?
Your property line has got to start somewhere, and it would be the determination of where your property is to the street.
My question is, can Nolan come to my house right now and tell me I have to cut down all my trees because they're right next to the street?
No.
No.
That's not what this says.
I disagree.
Bring it up to second, second reading.
If you would like to, yeah, we can definitely go with recommendations to make it clear for the public, but based on how it's drafted, that would not apply in that manner.
And there will be a second reading.
And there will be, and our next meeting at Forest Parks and Recs, where we'll talk about the Tree City ordinance is on four-four at three o'clock, and I urge you to come. Anybody that's interested?
Is on the line?
It's on April four, oh, April, yeah, four-four.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, and any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried. Committee reports, Admin and Finance, Georgia Holmes.
Try to speak loud. We did have a meeting on March 14th and at 1:00 PM, and we reviewed the management letter from Donna Dankern Associates with Mary Floto, and I believe that's in our packet tonight, so you can look at that. We did go and talk about chief of police pay, and we're looking at and evaluating the pay for our police department right now. We have a new position that is being, it's in our packet for the golf course superintendent, Jason Happy came and talked about that. The supplemental funding for matching of community housing, it's a study grant opportunity, and Kim talked about that, that's for seven thousand five hundred dollars, which would be half of that that we could possibly get. The, and that's on a contingency funding. Professional certification of city ordinance proposal. We are looking at a cost, I believe, of about eight thousand or eleven thousand five hundred or seven, and a maintenance of seventy-five dollars a year if we go with that, and that's something that we will be discussing a little later, not tonight, but we had a repayment for police officers, we're discussing a policy on that. Shed Co. requested the city to be a fiduciary for the grant funding opportunities, and that was recommended to our audit company, our audit. Boulder Falls Road costs, and that was discussed, it'll be in our packet tonight. We reviewed the 2015 annual report. We reviewed the 2015 annual report with Donna Denker, and I talked about that, I guess, at first, but we have a recommendation, I forgot. We would like, on the Boulder Falls road work, we'd like to have clerk of works to be maybe assigned with Tracy and a clerk of works.
Clerk of work?
Mm-hmm. Let's see.
I'm not familiar with it.
It's someone to follow, to make sure everything's done.
Project manager.
Project manager. Then we did have the facility use agreement with the Hot Springs School District, and it's just a renewing from 2015. Let's see. We, with Donna Denker's talk, and it's in our packet too, the sewer and water flooding for the golf cars, all those should be broke out according to our audit, and we'll talk about that soon. Okay? That's all.
Do you want to roll into airport or you have it later this month?
No, we, there was one on March 10th, or February 26th, and I did get that from the board because I was not there. The hay contract was noticed in the paper. We did that tonight. The hanger red fees will remain the same. They wanted to remove a tree from the terminal building area, and they discussed the lease agreement that it has to include dust and weed control clauses, and I believe all of those things are in FAA and DOT. They did come and talk about our airport study survey, and that was two nights, or on the afternoon of...
The board meeting was in the afternoon, and the public meeting was at 6:00 PM.
Right. So I think they went over everything with the airport board. It was in very good detail. We found out a couple of things we didn't know. We're prepping for weed spray on the pasture grounds, and it needs to be mowed, and I believe all that. Weather permitting, Ed was going to take care of that. The lease agreement with Romes was paid, and we need to verify property lines with Crowe, I guess where they're mining.
Mm-hmm.
With Crowe.
Cool.
They have their mining leases on the other end. We need to get quotes for maintenance work to be done out at the airport, and we're looking at getting security cameras throughout the airport. Okay?
All right, thank you, Georgia. Kara, Chamber of Commerce?
Hey, we had a meeting last Wednesday. Brad Kaiser passed out some literature about a new scout center space for the 4H. Greg Faust, Frank Mason, Jerry Colvin talked about the 40th anniversary for the Main Street Arts and Crafts. They discussed having roulette concert for that event, and that's something that the Chamber would manage. But they also want to bring roulette to the Miller Center, actually on the 25th of June. And the next, they discussed finances. We discussed the 76th Annual Meeting, the Awards Banquet. We discussed the Black Hills Tourism, Agriculture. We, they're looking at new egg events possibly in September, like the Egg Expo, but work with the 4H and the FFA, make it a larger event. As of now, only received one egg scholarship application. And Tourism welcomes, the Welcome Magazines are off to print. City Maps are at High Plains Graphics. The motel directories will all be done by the end of March. There will be a customer service training in early May. We're going to have two of these this year. That's something Black Hills State University really recommended was the customer service training. So the first one will be in May. We discussed our Soke Inn slogan in conjunction with the My Great Place Peak Season Campaign by Lawrence and Schiller, that the Chamber as well as the bid board are kind of covering the costs, sharing the costs on that. And some other advertising we're doing is a Scratch and Sniff, the sentence of Pine Scent campaign. It'll be aired in Minneapolis and Omaha, and there's 165,4,000 pre-qualified emails on that, or qualified emails on that. So we are talking to a certified. We're circulating our rack cards and Welcome Magazines across the state again. The lid swap is May 4th, and that's going to be at the Civic Center in Rapid City. The new Soke Inn banners, the light poles are going to be going out May through September. If any downtown businesses want to participate, the price is $30 per banner. It's a really, really good deal. It's really going to brighten up our downtown. Talk to Nolan on that one, if anybody's interested. We'll help you tie in a Soke Inn slogan with whatever your business represents. We are updating all of our billboards, well, at least the one, we're negotiating updating all of our billboards, but looks like we're, we're going to hit the majority of them at least for now, and we're cooperating Chamber and the city on that to have them represent the Soke Inn slogan. We're working on the Hot Springs Overnight Advantage for discount coupons for people who stay in our hotels. Olivia's been contacting all the businesses to get their interest. They've had really good response. We're working on a whole concept and seeing who wants to participate. There'll be more to come on that. The ambassadors visited a couple of new businesses. Kim Moyer's business Bodies in Motion was visited, and that should have gone on the paper, and Chautauqua Artisan Centers, and also Diane Browder with the Daily Bread Bakery and Cafe. So that's, congratulations, three new businesses.
That's great.
Yeah, that's really good. Events and promotions, we discussed that. We discussed the State Veterans Home Easter Egg Hunt, March 26th at 10:00 AM. Amber Hulse will be the new, the Easter Bunny again, and she has over 2,000 eggs. So, and website, social media, our page views are going up. Chamber Mixer, March 17th, that Chautauqua Artisans had happened from 10 to 5. They had a good response, I heard. And Save the VA EIS comment period extended to May 5th of 2016. Glenn Miller Orchestra, April 12, 2016 at 7:00 PM. Really popular old band. You guys try to get a ticket and go. We, we have really, I mean, this is, I went over through this as fast as I could, guys, but Chambers knew a lot right now.
Yeah, very busy.
And congratulations to you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. I wish it back. You don't have a meeting, right? I guess, and you don't have a meeting again for the plunge till later in the month?
I, we had a meeting last Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then you're on again.
We had a big meeting for that too, but I'll try and make it quick. We went over some public comments. We talked about the signage for the family changing room and health, and health was in the works. I don't, they can't understand my notes here, sorry. Mary requested that our 100% health inspection score would be shared with the Friends of Evans Plunge newsletter. Again, that's a really great accomplishment to get 100% under your health inspection. Yeah, that's awesome. Southern Hills Recreation Initiative and the Evans Plunge teaming discussion. Trace Dubor has been working with her group for the Southern Hills Recreation Initiative, Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative, and they've kind of changed their focus several times, going back and forth. They just want to have discussion with us to see if there's a possibility of partnering. Is, you know, can we, can we work together? What are the pros and cons of having a hybrid team, teaming up? You know, it's just a discussion. Is there any possibility we can work together and, and help draw Evans Plunge into a recreation center for the city and meet some of the needs, maybe not now, but work towards that in the long term? We went over the financial review, and we actually have about, I believe it was $31,000 left in our budget if you combine the building improvements, repairs, and then the general budget, the $52,000. I think we had, we want to save 20 to 25 of that, so we've got a little bit of a wiggle room. The ADA pool lift chair is still number one priority to get that fixed or installed. We don't have one. We've been working on this for a long time. All of the lifts that you can buy, the commercial lifts, they won't get the person down far enough in the water because we have such a big, our pool is really unique. There's such a big gap, it's such a long, steep area. So they're looking at the boat lift docks and kind of creating like an elevator type system. It's going to have to be something that's bid out. A couple of the members gave us some names of some people, and we're researching it. And Kim Barbieri and Nolan are involved in that as well, and Chris Hansen down there, and the maintenance guy. Jim is currently the maintenance guy, but he has given notice. We have a maintenance position and a janitorial position available. We discussed LED lighting. Steve presented information, Steve Widdian, and there would be a huge cost savings per year if we went LED. Hot shower review, this is a hot topic, as it has been for a while. So we're trying to get together bids. We got some people, a plumber, local plumber, who doesn't have the time to actually do the work, but said, you know, I'll help you out. Get an engineer from Rapid City. We'll draw this out for you so you know exactly what to do to get the hot showers. So we got that information. Now we're trying to bid it out to someone or get quotes, at the very least. So we'll see where that goes. Maintenance and janitorial position, I already mentioned that, and we're updating our billboards as well for Evans Plunge to reflect this, reflect the Soke Inn campaign. And our next meeting is the third Wednesday, April 21st, Thursday at 7:00 PM. That's it. Thank you.
Did you get on that, John? All right.
If you didn't, contact her after the meeting.
Busy groups there. Thank you very much. Krista, Parks?
Yeah, Parks, Recs, and Cultural Development. Kara kind of went over some of the same stuff of what's coming up, so that makes mine a little bit smaller. So thank you, Kara. I did, we didn't have any meetings, but I met briefly with Nolan about the Tree City USA ordinance, and then I met with Gerald in the park at Brookside where we kind of went over some plans of the upcoming Brookside bathrooms. And that's about all we did at Parks and Recs because the meeting is the 4th of April, so that will be the first Monday. So I urge you to please attend. You can also bring your thoughts on any kind of amendments to the Tree City ordinances with our Tree City USA, but it was something that we need to have done so we can move forward on that. And then at the Mueller Center on Cultural Development, we've got the Throwback Movie on the 24th, One Eye Jacks. That's a free movie, and that is so nice to have, and it keeps getting better attendance. So I urge you all to come and see it. It's a nice thing to have available. We have the free Easter service and breakfast at 9:00 AM here at the Mueller Center, and we have on the 31st, The Widow in Me at 7:00 PM. And that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Nolan Z, Tim, Public Safety?
Once a public safety meeting, there was no, no real agenda. I did visit with a police officer that had to be in the building at the time when we discussed the news nowadays continues. The two big, big things are the meth problem we have in the hills and the suicide problem that we have. And it sounds like it's one of those things that there's ongoing training about, and we're going to have to push our, help our police force maintain the training that they need to keep this problem, I'd like to say, under control. But it sounds like it's getting to be where it's a huge, huge situation now. So that's all we had for safety. Other than they are doing, I will mention that they did do some work down along the river walk. It was, they filled in some of the places where the bank was caving off, so you can walk along there now without having to worry about the sidewalk falling into the river. So we're working on that too. That's all there was for safety.
You want to roll right into public works?
Public works. We're going to, we're in the process, we've been in the process for several years of converting our meters over to a touch system. Some of you are aware of the little black boxes that you have hanging on the side of your house. That's how we read the meters now, and that is one step. And we get all our meters switched over to that system. Then we will continue on with an upgrade that will switch them to an automatic reading system. With the automatic reading system, the reader, meter reader will be able to just more or less drive down the street with her hand held in her hand, read all the meters. It'll, it's a lot more accurate, and it's a lot less time consuming than what we do now with these new meters. We talked about that, and we talked about the internal accounting for the utilities a little bit, how they were going to work with how the water and sewer gets to everybody else, and how it's taken care of on our books. Albany Avenue Project is back in progress. Hopefully, I drove by the other day, and it doesn't look like he's got an awful lot left, I hope. The loading dock building, for anybody that's interested, has been delivered and set. Guys will start working on putting all the internal controls and stuff on it. We lost a pump out at the Evans Pumping Station here last week. That's been replaced. They're starting to work on the Butler Park Soccer Field earthwork, and they started finding the measuring edge points for the Boulder Falls project, Falls Paving Project. That was it.
Great, thank you.
To clarify real quick. Great, or just to go a bit further, we have elevations measured. We're not going to be bulldozing the soccer fields in the near future. So we have elevations measured. Now we're going for quotes to get the earthwork done. It'll be a waste on the future of the budget for and plan for, but certainly we're on the path to implementing the tall grass plant, especially the soccer complex area.
And I'd also like to comment that, and I asked this question specifically during this meeting, the work that we are scheduling or the points that are being shot, that work does go with what is in the Parks Plan. Not deviating from the Parks Plan. So I would very, I asked that specifically, to make sure that we weren't snudging things. So when people come and stop and talk to me on the street, I can say, yeah, we're going by the Parks Plan.
Thank you, Jim.
Georgia, are we doing anything with the golf course yet?
Well, I've been communicating with Jason, but you commented last time for me, and that was that the golf course is open, so make sure everybody knows that. And Jason and Darwin both completed the chemical recertification training, and the carts and mowers are, the repairs on them are done. They're doing IT work in his office to make space for Darwin. And irrigation system is started up again. Jason and his assistant have been picking up good information at that training in Sioux Falls, and he would, he's really appreciates that he got to go. Okay?
Great, thank you, Georgia. Andrea, volunteer fire department meeting?
Couple of things going on. In the paper here, I think it was last week or maybe the week before, you probably saw that the 4H and the youth kids were handing out some things on the doors for the fire department, and they're going to be giving out smoke alarms for households, and they were going to be setting that up through the red cross, excuse me. They've, the volunteer fire department... They've, the volunteer fire department, I wasn't really, didn't really understand at all, and so I've really learned a lot. And actually, it's kind of funny that I didn't realize how many people actually volunteer for the volunteer fire department. There is a ton, and I thank all of them because I see them, you know, in the community, and I didn't realize that they were volunteers. So I've started "thank you" to tell them, "thank you." But some of them are serving in schools, which I think is wonderful. And they've, they're working on installing some new LED lights in their, in their bay, I think is what they call it, to, to help with the lighting there, and they're going to kind of do that in different installments. So that's kind of exciting, let's save some money that way, be more energy efficient. And then the last thing is that the contract is up for approval tonight by the council tonight, so that's in the agenda here, coming up.
Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate you taking the time to learn, because they are pretty awesome guys. I agree. All right, we are going to move on to new business. I need a motion to set a hearing for the resolution of necessity for the assessment of Boulder Falls. We'd like to do that on the floor.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, motion to authorize Finance Officer Misty Sommers Walton to apply for financing and sign necessary funding paperwork for Boulder Falls development.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. We removed item C, moving on to item D, discussion and possible motion to approve permanent part-time golf course technician position on the golf course. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, discussion and possible motion to approve fire protection service contract, this is what Andrea was speaking of.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Meter?
It is, yes, there's two members of the Hot Springs Common Council has to be appointed, so I think that's you and I, sir. Sorry.
I just, I asked that because I know that over the years that has been.
Neglected, in the contract, a little bit, yeah.
Neglected, and one of the things that just kind of bounced back and forth.
And, and we did discuss that with Mr. Stevens specifically, amongst other things, and he was okay with that.
Yeah.
And with their two from their board.
When will the mayor be appointing these two members? Next meeting.
Next meeting, yep. Unless we need to change, but that's, that's the hint. But yes, they were, they were fine with the board part. And we did add the meter part in there, but the.
Under section six.
Yeah.
It was added over there.
Per audit. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you on that. Discussion and possible motion to approve generally accepted accounting principles, utility billing for municipal accounts, foregoing costs to municipal users.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Appointment of council member to Board of Equalization. Councilwoman Holmes has done this in the past.
I'll still do it if, if you wish.
And she is willing to do it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Georgia, motion carried, thank you again. Item H, motion to support the September twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen Clime Hot Springs event, including approval of pedestrian use of DOT roadway, as approved by the DOT. And we've been asked to do this for the Rotary Club because they need the city's approval to request traffic control and, and safety crossings for the climb. I'd like to make this motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. It should be a fun event, y'all should be out practicing. I don't hear enthusiasm.
Run in stairs?
Run in stairs, yes, all of them, I think. Item I, motion to approve twenty sixteen joint use agreement between City of Hot Springs and the Hot Springs School District.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You want to do roll call?
I was the only one.
Motion carried. Item J, motion to approve travel request for Planning Administrator Barbieri for SODACE information, S-O-D-A-C-E information, and Training Conference May fifth, third through the fifth and pier.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a special finance officer report tonight. We have the annual report as required by state law by Misty.
Thank you. I made myself a little summary so I don't miss anything, but as Georgia mentioned earlier, you have the two thousand fifteen annual report in your packet. This is not what is at the auditor's office right now, that's two thousand fourteen, just to clarify. State statute requires that the finance officer provide an annual financial report to the governing body of the municipality at the first meeting in March following the fiscal year end. This year, the finance office requested and received a thirty-day extension from the Department of Legislative Audit. And that thirty-day extension gets us through to April, but we're ready to do it now. So you have the un-audited preliminary fund financial statements for the City of Hot Springs for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. I just want to briefly describe some of the reports that you have in your packet. And then for those of you in the audience, they'll be published with the newspaper and available on our website. On the first couple pages, you'll have in the annual report, reviews, the revenues that were received in all of the governmental funds for the City of Hot Springs, that includes our general fund, our liquor, lodging, and dining, sometimes called the BB&amp;B fund or LL&amp;D fund, our additional sales tax fund, our Business Improvement District, our Hot Springs Capital Improvement Fund, and our Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. On the second page, you'll see a summary of the expenditures for all those funds, and then the ending balances. On the third page is where you'll see our business-type activities or our proprietary funds, how you'll see beginning balances, revenues, expenditures, transfers in and out, and ending balances, and our water fund, our sewer fund, our garbage fund, our golf course, and Evans Plunge. And then at the very bottom of that third page, you'll see where our municipal funds are deposited. I also included a couple new reports that I'd like to start sharing with the council, at least on a monthly basis. You'll find a profit and loss summary by fund. Each of those funds that I just covered, you'll have monthly and year-to-date totals of revenues and expenditures for all of those funds. I'm happy to present that. It's a two-page document, but it took a lot of work to get there. And then just to help explain some of the balances that we have, I included a balance sheet. This may be a little bit more information than everyone needs, but I'd like you to review it, and if you have specific questions about anything you see on there, please let me know. Excuse me, I just thought that would be helpful so that you could see what we have as cash in the bank, what we have as receivables, so that balance sheet breaks that down a little bit more.
I appreciate that so much.
And then the last attachment I believe that you have is cash balance sheets for our two major accounts that we have, and what sits in each fund.
Misty, you might explain to people what your programs you're doing, or how your programs have helped you.
I've been in fund accounting software. This is the first time, I believe, since the city has purchased and used this software that the numbers have been accurate and match legislative audits. So having all that correct in the software system helps me provide reports to you that are both timely and accurate. So, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Couple notes to this.
Thank you, Misty. Kudos, Misty, thank you.
Couple notes I want to add to the numbers that you have in front of you. In the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, the city, as recommended by GAAP and GASB, implemented the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Sixty-eight. The primary objective of GASB Sixty-eight is to approve accounting and financial reporting by state and local governments for pensions. This is the first time these financial statements will be included for most cities, counties, and schools. The city's currently working with our accountants to prepare this new statement, and no adjustments have been made to the annual report in connection with the implementation of this statement. SDRS is one of the only state retirement systems that's currently fully funded. It's a hundred and seven percent funded and accordingly has a net pension asset. So as a result, the impact to the city for our two thousand fifteen fiscal year will be both the addition of an asset and a liability being recorded, but the net impact at this time will be positive. And I can explain more about that if you have specific questions.
This is so much better.
The city also has a component unit, which is the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Financial statements of the Housing and Development Commission are issued separately, and they're not included in this report. Also on tonight's agenda, the city discussed a change in the billing and accounting for internal utility usage. I'd like you all to know that this decision will impact the beginning and ending balances of each of the following funds, the golf course, Evans Plunge, water sewer, and the general fund. And any questions that anybody has regarding any of the information on these reports can be addressed at City Hall and the Finance Office. I welcome all questions.
Thanks so much, Misty.
Glad to see this happen. I don't recall it having been done since I've been on the council.
Thank you very much, Misty. We really appreciate you keeping us on track with state, with the state. Nolan, the city administrator report, please.
Just want to step back and thank Misty again, and the whole Finance Office, Karen, and everyone helps out with finances. Really is nice knowing where the city is at financially. As we look ahead to the future, Christie referenced the future as well, as we look ahead to the future, it's much easier to plan and to prepare when you know where you're at currently financially. So thank you, Misty, and thank you to everyone that's been so much conscious, and for you guys for supporting us.
We've had a lot of support.
As we answer these questions, as to where are we at, and, you know, where is the money, so to speak. Moving on, I want to congratulate, Georgia mentioned this earlier too, but Kara Hagan on being named the twenty sixteen Citizen of the Year by the Chamber this year. So congratulations, Kara. And also a member of the audience, oh, I think you stepped out already.
He did.
Gerald Colick was just with us, but he was named the twenty sixteen Volunteer of the Year, and he. Addition data prompting meetings at Brookside Park going over the site, he also helps out Parks Committee, and I'm sure you've seen his face around in many other scenarios or organizations. So thank you to Gerald. Two other items, the Southern Hills Golf Course will be featured in an upcoming article in South Dakota Magazine, so if you subscribe to that, or if you read that at the Hot Springs Public Library, there'll be a new article on the golf course here. And then lastly, kind of talking about our milestones we're accomplishing at City Hall, we did issue to our department heads, the last department head meeting, a comprehensive policies binder, so now they can reference any policy from our new personnel policy to our procurement and safety, to our training repayment, anything that we have that might affect their day-to-day or their policy implementation, they can now reference, and are really readily available by me. So we're making a lot of strides financially, administratively, to professionalize our government, but also make ourselves accountable to the tax benefit. Gerald, while you stepped out, we all clapped for you, so we'll clap again. Thank you for what you've done to the community, Gerald, appreciate it.
Thank you. That's it?
I want to say thank you for all the advertising that's been going on on Facebook. You like blow up Facebook all the time. Not kidding. In a good way. They are, for real. It's, it's great.
Thank you.
It's starting to pay off too, I think, and we'll see better others.
Yeah, yeah, revenues are up. All right, we'll be quick. Just want to remind the council, for those of you who are planning to go to the district meeting Wednesday night, the snow will not happen, I'm sure, it'll be perfect driving up there. The other thing I wanted the council to be aware of is that the volunteer fire department has contacted me asking to, to help train more of our city staff to, to do fire abatement in light of the State Home Fire, and also just the general knowledge that we are in extreme fire danger, and the State Home Fire was, was kind of a wake-up call, and they'd like to work with us more. So I look forward to more activity and discussions, not fire activity, but fire abatement activity discussions in April. I think everything else I was planning to say, but I did want to thank Gerald and Kara also for their just incredible support. I mean, when they read through the things that you both have done, you guys could run the city out of minutes. But just your volunteer and all the projects you're involved in, greatly appreciate that.
You still have to be here any point.
Oh, okay, well. Yeah, they don't, they don't give me to check, but thank you both, that was awesome to hear about you both that night. Also want to thank the council for preparing for this four-page, three-page agenda, and we're not done, so we still need to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you all.